So.
Call the Cascade Charter Township Planning Commission to order for Monday, October 3rd, 2022. Record the attendance. Member Ingle is absent and I don't know if member Deering, she said she might be absent. So both are excused. Moving on to Article Two, the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make a motion to approve the current agenda.
Second, motion made by member Rissy, supported by our vice chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on. I hear a motion to approve the minutes for September 12th, 2022. Member Deering typically does this as our secretary, so did anybody else have an opportunity to sit through those minutes? Member Korsnich, may.
I did, and I didn't see anything alarming, but I wasn't, I was just looking at the the need of it. I wasn't looking at any grammar, but I will make the motion to approve the minutes from the September 12th meeting.
And of course, this makes a motion. Do I hear support?
Support.
Support from member Rissy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Is that what you're saying is I was absent from that? So, okay.
No worries. Article Five, approve the minutes from the September 19th meeting where I was absent, so.
I read that one and I would move to approve the minutes September 19th.
Thank you, member Rappin. Member Rappin makes the motion. Do I hear support? Support from member Korsnich. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Me a favor. Any against now? Nay. Hearing none. Article Six, to disclose any conflicts of interest.
None.
Hearing none, we'll move on to Article Seven and acknowledge visitors wishing to speak. We have an action coming up. We don't have a public hearing, so it can be about anything. Do we have any members in the audience who wish to speak or anybody on Zoom? Matty? No? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on. Before we do, on the minutes, Brian, there was a comment at the last township meeting that they have not been getting our minutes.
Okay.
Make sure they get those.
Yeah, so I don't know if it was because we had a backlog to approve, but.
Yeah, I'm sure that's what it is.
Yeah, no problem. It came from the clerk who asked the question.
Okay.
So, moving on to Article Eight, case number 22-3735, Coon's Trust Properties.
All right, so here the applicant's requesting site plan approval for an approximately 16,800 square foot addition, which would connect two existing industrial buildings. The buildings are located at 5,100 Patterson and 5085 Kendrick Court. And the final building size would be approximately 64,400 square feet. Coon's Auto Body owns the buildings on both parcels and has been looking for ways to add on to the existing building at 5,100 Patterson. So this proposal would see the addition connect both buildings, and as a result, the two parcels would then need to be combined. As a result of connecting the buildings, a fire lane was required and they have, did receive a variance to allow the fire lane to extend into the required 20-foot buffer yard. While the width of the buffer yard could be approved with a variance, the number of plantings required can be reviewed by the planning commission. When looking at the site plan, you'll see that there's a stormwater detention basin located immediately to the north of the proposed addition. So on the site plan, the addition's right in the middle here, and then there's a detention basin just north of that, which does provide some natural screening there. In my staff report, you'll see that I'm proposing the applicant provide only the required understory tree and shrub plantings, not any canopy trees on the majority of the fire lane. And that'd be the approximately 100 or 75 foot area right here, and then extending north of that 150-foot property line to this area. And that's because that would still provide a vegetative screen, but then also limiting the conflict of branches growing into the proposed fire lane there. And then along the north property line, I am proposing the applicant provide 15 evergreen shrubs for the same reasoning. So in this area here in the north where the fire lane is being added. So if the planning commission agrees with those planting requirements, then a $6,500 landscape bond should be provided by the applicant. The fire department has reviewed and approved the plans and have noted that the fire lane must remain clear of obstructions at all times, which would include dumpsters or parked vehicles. One other item that requires some additional review is the number of parking spaces. And the applicant did provide a summary in the packet there that demonstrates how the total requirement, total parking requirements for their various properties in the area meet existing, are met using existing parking space to park cars within the buildings and then an area of deferred parking. So they own these two properties and also the property immediately to the south as well, and actually leased space in one other building. So the required 194 parking spaces for the proposed combined parcel can be met between the existing parking onsite, some interior parking, which could be included in the building, and then the deferred parking, which would be immediately to the south. So it did include a condition that requires the applicant to come back before the planning commission to construct the deferred parking if there is a parking issue in the future. The township engineer has reviewed and approved the plans and noted that a stormwater maintenance agreement will be required. So at this time, staff are recommending approval of the site plan for the 16,846 square foot building addition with the seven conditions there that are listed in the staff report.
That is a lot. We have any questions from staff? Nice job, Brian. Yes, member Rissy.
Brian, can you move your drawing two inches to the west?
So you see further this way or the other way?
There you go. Thank you. That's perfect, right there. Thanks.
It's more of a directive than a question. Does anybody else have any questions?
Sorry. Yeah, I have a question. So right now, there's no way to get from Patterson to Kendrick Court through that parking lot. But it would appear that the fire lane, well, there is, but it looks like there's a fence there. The fire lane would make a clear path all the way through Kendrick Court. Is there any concern with traffic using the fire lane? Or would that, will there be a fence there or will that need to be open?
I, I believe they'll need to be open. I'm sure the fire department can confirm that, but I'm sure they're the ones requiring the fire lane, so I believe it'll have to be open. I, I don't see there being an issue with people cutting through there. That's a bit of a narrow space to go through. I don't think it's an obvious way to cut through. That's a good question, but there is.
Bit of a maze when you, I tried driving around it. It's a bit of a maze once you get to that back court. So I was curious if that was.
It's definitely not.
Sure.
Hmm.
That would be my only thought or concern.
So I have a question. In the past, have we counted parking spaces inside a facility as part of the required parking spaces?
Not, at least in my time here, looking back too much further, this is specifically for a kind of automotive repair and those require more parking spaces, actually twice as many as such as just a light industrial use. So it does require a lot more. That's part of the nature of that business. They naturally have a lot indoors. So that is a bit unique, but to my knowledge, I don't know if we've counted that in the past.
As part of the required, I mean, as part of the count.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
It, if it were an office building, how much less parking, I mean, do they have enough parking for that use?
I believe the office building is the same as automotive.
Is it?
I believe so. Yeah.
I'm just curious what the.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, light industrial is 1.5 spaces per thousand square feet, general office, and then automotive repair is three per 1,000 square feet.
Okay, so it is, yeah, significant more. Interesting. Okay, I don't think it's a big deal to count indoor parking.
We're counting parking at the airport, they have indoor parking.
Any other questions for staff?
No, and given the, a lot of the types of cars that they work on, indoor parking is probably appropriate, so.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward? You could state your name and location.
Good evening. My name is Don DeGroot and with Excel Engineering, and Mike Coonis is here as well. And I guess Brian did an excellent job of summarizing the project and we're just here to answer any questions that you might have. I might just add to the parking discussion. I think that's why your parking requirements jump from one and a half per thousand to three per thousand square feet is because of the nature of what Mike's business is, and that parking inside certainly should qualify for that because a big part of what he does is working on those vehicles and he's got to have some storage for them and, and to work on them. And so that's his objective is to get more cars undercover. It just helps his operation and there's more room to work. And so he's provided a good summary of the business and, and things are expanding and he's just continuing to look how to maintain the facility has and expand as necessary. And, and he's been in Cascade for a long time and he can, can, wants to continue with that as well. So, but we'd be happy to answer any questions as they come up.
Questions?
Yeah, can you explain, I mean, I'm sorry, I read it a couple of times and I'm not the sharpest tool up here. So can you explain the parking to me? Because it seems like you're grabbing spaces from other buildings that you own and lease and it's so confusing.
Sure. The, the, the parking is, I think, fairly clear on the two sites that we're looking at. Mike leases a building directly to the south.
So would that be 5130?
I believe it's 5130.
5130, okay.
5130 and part of the lease he has, and remind me, Mike, how many spaces?
I think there's 34 spaces.
34 spaces that he would be allotted as part of his lease agreement. And then in addition to that, the property he owns, the, the building he owns with 52nd Street frontage, there's some existing parking there, and then we provided a concept, which I think is in the packet. It's a handwritten sketch packet, sketch that illustrates the additional, I think it was 72 spaces on that site as well, which he controls. And so if parking were to be a concern, we've certainly shown how we can meet the requirement, but don't feel at this point that that's necessary. So I don't know if that helps.
It does. With the 52nd Street, sorry, I didn't know that you were gonna, where's the 50, is that the 49 or 4855, 52nd Street?
Yeah.
Okay, is that the one right next to the 5130 Patterson?
Right, to the east of that. It's directly south of the Kendrick site.
It would be, it would be this piece right in here.
Oh, 4985?
Yeah, I don't have.
4985, if you pulled up, yeah, there's a bunch of different, yeah.
There's, there's like a 10,000 square foot building on it right now, but there's a lot of ability to park up to the north.
I just, I'm looking at the map, trying to figure out where everything is, so.
Really, like right now, we only have eight stalls for cleanup. So once we get this, we're gonna have double that. So every car's gonna be inside. Same, our current cleanup area is gonna be just area to park prime cars. So basically, instead of having, say, 10 cars outside waiting to get painted, they're gonna be inside. Our problem is we want cars inside. Like every bit of my facility has inside outside cameras, and the way the production is run is I can see every car even in the paint booth. So that's where I need everything inside. So this, this whole addition is not to add body men to the main building. It's to bring all the cars inside, so we don't have these cars parked on the side. So it's really, it's, it's a good thing. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
It's really gonna help the parking once this is done. So another thing I want to add to the building we lease, we have eight years left there. And I have in there that I get first right of refusal, so the guy can't sell it. So the building I'm leasing, I don't see a way I'm not gonna end up with it. Then the guy that owns it's old too, so I think I'll let him.
Hopefully, right?
But yeah, so to me, I, I, I've often been trying to buy a building, so, but it's, I have it in there to hold. So that, that parking won't go away either.
Let the minutes reflect that.
And again, like in the lease building, there's only six guys in there. So these buildings have very few people and the other buildings. So basically, the parking problem's at the main building. That's why this will solve my issue of keeping the building covered and sized.
That was my question, just how long the lease was remaining, so thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, this isn't slated for public hearing. Do we have any conversation internally?
So I guess my biggest concern is, I mean, I get it, right? But I mean, we, we've never counted inside spaces before. So if we do that now, we're setting precedent. We, you know, we're combining buildings and well, you've got parking that's for this building, but we're gonna use some of it for that building. And I'm like, it's, I don't know, it's, are we creating a precedent for future headaches, not with this project, but with future projects?
I think the thing to remember is that they're in auto repair. That's what they're doing. And they're trying to put the vehicles indoors. That is, that is the goal. And in other businesses where you might look at a precedent, the, I, I guess that's what you have to consider is, are they, I, I don't want to see vehicles that are in disrepair outside, you know, waiting for parts or they're, you know, the more he can put indoors, the better. I guess that's the way I, I, I look at it. I drive by a, a local establishment on a regular basis that repairs cars. And, and it might be a location that they happen to be familiar with. And that, that location, there's, there's a lot of vehicles in that parking lot on a regular basis. And if at night they put more of them inside, there might be room for the new ones to show up instead of blocking the road. So I, I think this is a win-win, frankly, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
What do you think about taking those parking spots from other buildings? Cause that building doesn't have enough.
Well, I think that was more or less a, a way to meet our math. I don't think, I didn't take that as a, we need those extra spaces. I think that was their method to say, well, our playbook says you have to have 11 parking spaces. So if I borrow two from this guy and two from this guy, I get your 11, since you won't count my indoor ones. But if we count his indoor ones, I think he's, he's much more closer to the promised land. Am I wrong on that?
No, I agree. And I think of like medical office buildings, a lot of them have indoor parking where there's a huge chunk that will hide under the building and be completely indoors. So I don't think it's abnormal to count those spaces. And I feel comfortable with the lease spaces, knowing they have an eight-year lease on that space, and he has right to first refusal for that. And there's minimal people currently working in that building, so that frees up a lot more spaces. I'm comfortable with it all.
I get the concern. I mean, we're making a long-term decision on multiple parcels, that one leased, one's a different parcel. But I, in this instance, I, I understand the benefits of the indoor versus outdoor. And I think it's manageable. I just don't know what we would need to do to think long-term of what if one of those parcels sold or the lease was not available, and all of a sudden you don't have parking. I don't know what the, once it's approved, we don't have a lot of room to go back and change it, but I'm comfortable with it as proposed.
Yeah, member Rissy, then member.
Brian, when we approve, let's say, a multi-resident unit, like apartments or condos, and they come to us with garages, do we include that as part of the parking as the whole area?
Include, include covered or if it's under.
Enclosed.
Enclosed.
Yep. So we already, and, and this isn't, we're not setting a precedent necessarily, maybe in this particular use.
Right, this, this one's a little, a little different, but we would allow, like you said, enclosed as part of a residential complex being built.
Okay.
Or a medical office building, correct?
Right.
Cause a lot of them have people, most people probably don't know, but there's garage doors around the back that park under the building, and they have tons of parking inside of them. And I think of this kind of, it's a similar example where they're gonna have doors to bring cars inside where they're gonna park them.
Right, I, I think that, that's something that we're gonna see more and more of too, but maybe I'm wrong.
Member Max.
Yeah, a question from Mr. Coonis. By having more spaces indoors to work on the cars, does that reduce the amount of shifting of cars in your operation? You can better monitor what's going on?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, and it makes it so much better to have all the cars inside. And even like the 52nd Street building, but again, that's a two-acre parcel with only a 10,000 square foot building on it. I only have half of it, but the tenant is gonna leave by middle of next year. This example, when I get that other half, I'm not adding people to that, the three men in there, they're gonna keep all their cars inside. That helps me. Like right now, you drive there, you'll see maybe four, five cars outside during the day. And they drive in at night. What's nice is all these cars can stay in. So it's all, the goal is to get every car inside, other than, say, towed-in vehicles that have to stay out there towed.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep. Brian, not count, counting the parking spaces inside, sorry, didn't raise my hand. Counting the parking spaces inside, right? And not counting taking spaces from some of the other leased property. How short is he?
So they, for just the combined parcel, that requires the 194 spaces. So counting the existing parking spaces on that site, counting potential spaces in the building, and then counting that large potential deferred space that, or parking, that's when they meet that. So you don't have to borrow like the existing from the property that's southwest, just adding that deferred would get them to that minimum parking requirement.
So that's another question I have, is that now or not?
And guys, please don't misunderstand me. I'm, I, I like what you're doing, right?
But I don't like that we're, oh, we didn't quite meet the numbers, so we're gonna borrow some spaces from over here. And it's, it's, what's the point in having, what's the point in having numbers? And, and if we're just gonna.
Well, showing that we've allowed deferred spaces before. So I'm showing that deferred spaces, that's something we've seen in the past. And then if a parking issue comes up, they have to come back and then create that parking lot.
Okay. Are you comfortable?
Yeah, with what he just said, I think we need to say something in there that if, in the future, if parking becomes an issue, then.
Sounds like an opportunity for you to make a motion.
No way. I'll let Scott do it.
Okay, I got it right here. I'm ready. Case number 22-3735, approve the site plan for the 16,846 square foot building addition with the following conditions. One, applicant complies with the Township Engineer Letter dated 9/27/22, and all necessary permits are obtained before construction begins. Number two, record the stormwater maintenance agreement. Number three, the two lots at 5,100 Patterson and 5085 Kendrick Court are combined for the building addition and connection of the two existing buildings meet all Applicable Building Code standards. Five, all, a landscape plan that meets the conditions discussed at this meeting is approved. And six, provide a landscape bond in the amount to be determined by the planning director. I think he determined that in his report.
That's at $6,500.
$6,500. And number seven, the applicant agreed to the deferred parking plan presented by Planning Director Hellbrandt.
There's also a number seven in there about deferred parking.
Nine.
Oh, I made seven up cause I didn't see it was on the next page, but it's already there. You must have missed it too. I just needed to scroll further. Okay, I can put it in, I'll put it in the staff's words, which are, if there is a parking issue in the future, the property owner must come back before the planning commission for a site plan review of the deferred parking. So we'll go with that version of number seven.
With that, I'd support.
Thank you.
There's a whole host of other requirements that we didn't mention there. Do we want to just add an all other staff recommendations?
Where? I think that was, I think Scott got them all.
I thought I read them all.
He got, see, I'm looking at the one that you sent. And it was up to 14, like there's a photometric plan.
And he really? Oh, that, those are the comments. They provided the, okay, so then further down the staff recommendations to Scott.
Mr. Chairman, you, you're, you're better than that. You need to scroll down further too.
However, I will point out that the 6,500 is mentioned.
Yeah.
On the page, so, okay.
You're sorry.
All those in favor, we have, we have a motion from member Rissy. Do I hear support? Support from member Rappin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry for the miss on that.
It's all, it's all, I missed too. Apparently, we both missed.
Yeah, though, all right. Article nine, review the major street plan.
Oh, boy, can we?
Yeah.
So at the previous planning commission meeting, staff were asked to provide some of the Kent County Road Commission maps then to compare to the township's major street plan. So in your packet, there included some of those. The first is just the county roadmap, and so the way the county primarily classifies roads is there's the county primary roads and then the county local roads. So they break those down. And also on the website, I found the Kent County Truck Route Map, so that indicates the all-season roads, which I thought was a helpful tool as well. So included both of those in the packet along with our current street plan. So when comparing those two maps to our own plan, there are, there's a lot of similarities. There are a couple of differences there. You know, one is the exception that, that stretch of Craft Avenue that's coming under discussion is the primary road on the county map that we have as a local map on our major street plan. And then the other largest part is that there's probably a number of residential roads, especially east of the river, that the major street plan that our plan identifies as collector roads, but the road commission map identifies only as local roads. So those are kind of the biggest differences between the two. And then, as also mentioned, I did just do a very kind of general pro and con list of using the township map, using the road commission map or no map at all used just to help kind of guide a little bit of discussion then tonight. So that was the information then.
Go ahead, member Rissy.
Well, I think the difference in opinion on Craft is a really good explanation of, then it would appear our map is just out of date. And as far as the difference on the other roads to the east as being different classifications, my take on that would be that the road, I could see where the road commission, from a county perspective, would view that as a local road.
Right.
Whereas at a township level, we would say that it's a collector road. So I, I can absolutely see, and I think that's exactly the type of differences we would have if we adopted the road commission's maps. But I, for the most part, I'm, I'm somewhat indifferent on this. Managing a separate set of maps, I still think is, is maybe not the right, the right spot for us to be in. But I could, I could go either way. I just, I don't like hearing that somebody came in, you know, for a potential application for something that I think most likely if the map had been up to date, would have been fine. And the opportunity was missed because this body hadn't updated the map. And
I agree 100%.
I, and so that concerns me. I want to fix that problem because I don't think that's good customer service.
I think that if we do stay with it, I agree with everything he said, but I think if we do decide to stay with the township's own map, I, I don't think biannually is too soon or too long. I mean, to be updating that map, just given the changes that can happen, just to make sure if there is just a town, if the township keeps having its own, to make sure it's updated at least biannually. Otherwise, I agree with everything Scott said. I'm indifferent either way. I'm frustrated, I guess, for whoever, the applicant or the person who thought about purchasing property and was told they couldn't have their business there, knowing that, like I said, the only vehicles I've seen on that road are semis. So that's all I have to say, but I'm pretty indifferent either way.
And I think from a staff perspective, I mean, we can definitely start incorporating that annual, biannual, however you want to do a review of that.
Well, especially with the new software.
Right.
I mean, it's something that can be put in there that hopefully won't be missed in the future, that will be on a schedule. I, I feel comfortable knowing that we have a software that enables that. And that's, I guess, part of why I'm indifferent to it.
Brian, often does the county review their maps? Is that annually or biannually?
I don't know if it is because this map looks like it was pulled from, you know, the, it came kind of from their long-range plan, which was adopted in 2017, revised in 2018. I haven't seen anything new since then. So it's not, I don't know if they're doing it. Their wrote, their truck map, I believe, is revised much more often. But the, the roadmap there, the primary local, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily an annual thing, or maybe they reviewed annually, don't make changes. That's possible. I could reach out to them as well.
But I think the important point to make is that their, their map is eight years newer than ours. Yeah, while it may not be very up to date, it's eight years newer than, almost a decade newer than ours. Do we want to have the, if, if we kept the responsibility of updating a map annually or biannually, however we decided to do it, okay? And so we, it's on our agenda. We look at the map and, and there's a discussion, let's say hypothetically, we're gonna change Butrick from a local road to a collector road, okay? Do we want to be the body that makes that choice? Is that, or do we want that to be the road commission?
I think that it would have to be a mix of both, because I think there's certain infrastructure that would have to be made sure that is there in order for us to upgrade some of these. That's just my feeling.
I think it's, yeah, I don't know if it's required, but it's good planning to be reaching out to them and say, hey, here's are the proposed changes. We're thinking of, do you see any red flags or something like that? Do you see any red flags or something like that?
Do you agree and so that they change it on their map and so now?
Right, and I don't know if they would, that's the problem, right, is using the county map is then we don't have any control over it. We can, you know, ask them, but if they, if we want something changed and they don't want it, then we're out of luck with that.
I think that's my one question is, what is your recommendation? I mean, you're the, you're paid to do this.
I, kind of similar to you guys, is I, I don't think there's a, there's a perfect plan, everyone, each one has a little bit of its pro and cons, but I think I do like having our own map that gives us more flexibility where if there is an issue, we can go in and amend it then and change things and using, probably working closer with these Kent County roadmaps, I think especially the, the trucking map helps showing where those all-season roads are, kind of keying in on that to use for our amendments here.
And so I'd rather we keep control of it.
I think I'd be okay with this so long as we have a reminder, review it annually. I don't like the duplication of effort if the maps are gonna be ninety-nine percent the same. And I don't love the idea of having our own version of the map just to be more restrictive. If the county's looking at the, the road as what the road can handle, like from a structure-wise, I don't know that we would need to have, um, I guess I'm, I'm failing to see why we would want to have a more restrictive version of the same map.
It gives us a little more land use control. I think one example I thought of is, let's say we, so of course, one of the options is having the county map where then if land use comes in that we want to allow, but their roadmap doesn't allow it, then we're really out of luck because we can't even amend the map or change it. Um, if we don't have a map, you know, and we review things on a case-by-case basis, that could potentially hurt us a little, the example I thought is of if, you know, daycare comes in, which are now requires, uh, to be on a collector or a two-year-old road, and it goes in on, you know, middle of a neighborhood or local road, um, you know, but say it kind of meets the other requirements, it's allowed by special use, you know, say they do a traffic study that shows the road can accommodate it, but we have, you know, fifty neighbors saying how they don't want to see it there. That limits our ability to deny that, then if it's kind of checking our boxes and things like that. So this kind of gives us that starting point. Or again, the, the con is that it's, you know, not quite as flexible, or we may have to go in and amend it here and there, but it does kind of give us those stricter standards that we can use.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, it just seems like we're getting pretty far down the list if we're gonna use the road as the, the final hurdle to change, you know, say no to a project. But I understand.
We want a long list.
I think, yeah, it gives. Well, we do, but we don't want to be overly restrictive at the same time.
No.
But I think that's where the, that's where this conversation started, was that it, the map made it overly restrictive for someone to come in, so we're solving that problem by making it restrictive and just saying we're gonna update the map more often.
Right, but I think that, I think our concern with the restriction, the, the case in point, was that I think we all agreed that that seemed to be an appropriate business to go in that area. And we couldn't figure out why the map didn't allow it. And so I think looking at the three of them, it identifies that our map was way outdated and that if it had been updated, hopefully that would have changed. And this particular business would have been allowed to be there versus to me, the example Brian gave, which made more sense to me in more of a residential different area versus the example that we had.
Does it, does it make sense then for all of us to go drive all these roads and at another meeting make a recommendation, update the map? Is that?
I think that's what I do, Scott.
Anyways.
That's what I do, you don't have to do.
Member Roland, so my thought is if we control the map and it gets updated once a year, twice a year, whatever it is, we have a business that comes in and says, hey, this road isn't updated for that business. Brian's team can say, listen, we've mapped that road three years now, it can handle it. We could potentially modify it so that this, this, I mean, I just think it gives us control.
In, in that example, the, the one example that you gave was really somebody looking to purchase property and it was like, oh, no, as of right now, it doesn't allow for that business, but let's say somebody purchased property with the intent of doing it, could, the way the map currently was, could they come in here for a variance of some sort for us to approve?
I think they would apply for a, so what this, what we're, when we amended, we're amending the zoning ordinance, so they could come to us and apply for a zoning amendment and we would go through that due diligence then and determine whether we want to.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that, just knowing that, I think in this example, it was a, a hard example because it was me just looking to buy property at the time. Hey, will my business fit here? No, as of right now, it can't. And obviously, they've probably found someplace else to put it that did allow it, but I'm comfortable with that, knowing that if we have a map, if it is too restrictive, they have the ability to come here.
And we have the ability to open it up if we choose to.
Yeah, yes. I'm goo, I'm good with, I guess, keeping what we have, but seeing an update whenever.
Amending, amending the existing.
Whenever you can.
Does anybody have a contrary view to that? So is annual for now acceptable? You do a number of annual reports for us?
Mm-hmm. And I think we'll, you know, jump into this one right now since it's been brought up before, so we'll start with this.
I think we can always revisit this in a couple of years and see, you know, is it?
Right, if it's not working after three years, we can always kind of come back and go from exact, again, I, you know, in the past, this hasn't, this is the first time it's come up since I've been here, so don't anticipate this coming up all that often, but we'll approach it the best we can and then all of a sudden it's popping up two or three times a year, we can revisit it again.
I'm glad to hear you're planning to be here in a couple of years.
I was making a note for somebody. Is that as easy as it is to say I'll be here? But we'll see.
Excellent, all right, I think, do you have what you need for that?
Yep.
Excellent, moving to article ten, any old business? Yes, member Maxley.
Yeah, I drove by, uh, sixty-four eighty Cascade Road again tonight on the way over here. And, uh, I haven't seen any real improvement, uh, for the past month on that property, something needs to be done, we've got, he's running a business out of that property, he's a renter, he's not the owner. And, uh, we need to take action. Brian, do you know what's, what's happening there, is it Madison said anything to you about it?
I haven't heard anything recently, so I'll touch base with her for an update and put that on the top of the list.
He has moved his stuff from out, from the front of the road or by the road, which is good, but I agree with.
Like it does get pushed. Like just movies, it's like just pushing stuff.
So I walk Cascade Road all the time, um, and I'm telling you, there's different vehicles in there every week. There is, there's, listen.
Just when you drive by.
Not the second kid, I like him, the first kid, I'll bet her life, no, I'm just, no, they're running a business, there's no doubt. I mean, there's no doubt and.
That's why we have enforcement, so let's, let's dig in.
It's too visual.
Yeah. Let's dig in, we've got a meeting in two weeks, is it reasonable to take it a report on that, uh, in the next meeting?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay. We'll follow up on it, because I don't think you'll be here, so.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other old business? Okay. Uh, article eleven, uh, any other business? I have one item, uh, that the board is looking at, and I think we can help with this. Uh, there seems to be a lot of crime around, uh, a number of the hotels on Twenty-Eighth Street. Uh, I was hoping you could pull the PUDs for all the hotels, not that many hotels on Twenty-Eighth Street and send it to us ahead of the next meeting, so we can, uh, collectively review, uh, the PUDs and look for any potential changes that we might be able to, to look at and maybe even see if the attorney can be present at the next meeting, so we can discuss what we can and cannot do. I don't want to overlap with what the township's doing, but it does seem to make sense that it, or the protestees, but it seems like it would start here.
Is there something specific you were looking for?
I want to understand if we can put a requirement, uh, a couple of ideas I had, I'd love to hear more. Can we restrict the amount of nights that an individual can stay, right? I think they're being used as effectively apartments.
Yeah, short-term rentals versus hotels.
I would like to understand if we can, uh, if we have the ability in the PUD to put a minimum price per night, because I think that would solve this. Uh, but I don't know what we can and cannot do, and that's why I'm asking the attorney, uh, member Rissy.
I, I, I like the line of thought you're going down and I, I wouldn't be surprised if the PUD already specifies a limitation on stay.
And it could.
Because I, I would, I, some of them may do that, maybe the more newer ones that were approved, but I don't know, I have to. I think I, I like the direction of the line, line you're thinking, and I mentioned that at the board meeting to some of the board members after the meeting and maybe manager Swayze, that I thought that, um, the newer ones that we recently did here might, might have had, I know there was discussion about dollars and cents, but I think they, the market was gonna determine that.
I might just request that we have time to review what's in there, what we could enforce and might already be there before we ask council to come about, to talk about what we want to add and maybe use the next meeting as an opportunity to talk about what's there, what we think would be an opportunity to add and then invite council to weigh in on that, or maybe the board's gonna do that.
I, my, my only request, uh, then with having council here is just so that we can ask questions about what we can, not, not to weigh in what we should do, but what we can. Right, go ahead, go ahead, Timmy.
I believe council's already on it.
Okay. So then let's look at the PUDs and help township by making a recommendation.
Right, and this isn't, I don't want to sound that, but this is not something new, like when the sheriff report comes up, I, it's eighty to ninety percent of the calls within the township.
Yeah.
Whatever it's called, Hotel Alley. Um, it's eighty to ninety percent of the calls within the township are to that area, so it's not, it's not a new problem, but it's definitely something that should be addressed.
Yes.
We're also working on that with the attorney, um, I'd like a recapture fee per call.
Yeah.
Like two, you get like two free calls a month and then it's like.
Like the fire department, you can't call them every day.
Right. It's like a three hundred and fifty dollar. Attorney's working on that as well.
That's, that's fifty here.
So perhaps what we can do is review the PUDs.
That's what we need.
Yes, and, uh, again, make any recommendations. I do think, again, council doesn't have to be at the meetings much as on the phone, I think that would be helpful.
Just on, by Zoom.
Yeah. Are you, you have any concerns with that, Ben?
No, I, I, no, I don't.
Yeah.
I guess the sooner we can get the PUDs to review and prep for that call, the better, but I like that.
Yeah, member Rissy.
Uh, Brian, we can't necessarily amend a PUD with a particular owner that's in that agreement with us unless they're willing to go along with it, correct? After it's already in place, we can't come back and say to like Culvers, they have a PUD that lets them have a drive-through, we can't go back there and say, hey, we've decided you need to have twelve more parking spaces and we're getting rid of your drive-through. I mean, that would, that's not really something we could do unless both parties or unless they initiate the review. Am I, am I wrong there, do we?
I'd probably have to, yeah, double check that, because I don't know if that's come up.
And if ownership has changed.
Yeah, I'll, I mean, we can add that.
This, I'm just curious, this is a hypothetical, you know, example.
No, that's a good question, so.
I think this is where legal can help us.
Right, right.
Also, you know, we have the ability to do zoning. And that was another, you know, thought I had, again, just one idea was the minimum hotel rate, right? But are there, are there other options?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I would hope that we would look at a zoning option first instead of a PUD by PUD enforcement. If that's our intent.
Right, well, unless there's areas of the PUD we can recommend to the township, like, hey, you have this teeth, go use it, right?
Or, or if the ownership did change, let's say without any, is there something we can do, does the original PUD still stand if ownership has changed?
Yep, yeah, it is, but they don't, I don't think they have to alert us to a change in ownership, but that's a good question for legal counsel to, to double, to confirm.
And this would be good tribal knowledge for us to have anyway, as we look at, you know, other cases. Okay, uh, yes, member Maxley.
I personally think that, uh, we ought to limit the occupancy to about thirty days max. That's my personal opinion on it. I think there's a lot of people who are using these places as apartments, long-term.
Well, and I think that it should be even less than thirty days, I just think there, there are residence inns, which are more of a long-term, and I think they have about a thirty-day, actually, it's longer than that, um, maximum for them. But I think as a normal hotel, thirty days is even a lot, really. You know, I mean, versus a residence-in style long-term hotel.
I think one of the ones that we recently approved by Meyer was a residence-in style. If I, at least I know that.
Extended stay type.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that came up in the discussion.
Cause I know there's one down by across from like Home Depot area.
Oh, that would be Catwood.
That would, there is, there is. Yeah, yeah. Any other, uh, other, other business?
Drive through it every day. Yeah, so I have some other business. We have a committee that's looking at zoning issues in and around the airport area. And, uh, our committee is looking forward to the next planning commission meeting because, uh, we've been working on, we've been working on looking at the current uses of the airport and potential future uses of the airport or any other, um, tenants the airport might want to, uh, include. And so we're looking at, at the zoning map, the zoning definitions. And, uh, Ralph here is passing out, uh, a, a picture of the current zoning at the airport, which I'll pass on down to people to my, to my right, uh, just to give you a description here. So we have, the main airport area is AC one, and then there's a sub-district that is AC two. And, uh, what we're looking at is the possibility of what areas maybe we should expand or contract the AC one area. And the same said with the AC two area, so, um, then the other item that came up in our recent discussion is the area between M-six and the airport is currently future land use as, uh, light industrial. It's, it's zoned arc, as you can see, um, or airport classification. And our next planning commission meeting, I believe our, our chairman has invited, uh, or asked to have the, uh, public in that arc area come in and give us some feedback. And so our committee is looking forward to hearing that feedback so that we can come up with a, a, uh, maybe a proposed drawing and some proposed, um, new regulations for the AC one and AC two category. We're talking about changing AC two into an overlay district as opposed to a specific zoning area. But this is, again, lots of conversations, we'll come to you guys and I, we'll hash some things out here, but uh, that's kind of the direction we're moving towards. And so we just wanted to give you a little teaser and let you know what we're talking about. Um, but we want to make sure that what we do works well for the airport. We want the airport to prosper and work well, but at the same time, we need it to work well for the township and its, its residents. And so we're, uh, we're kind of trying to balance both, and that's why we're looking forward to hearing the public's input.
What, what I hear you saying, uh, to, to make sure that I hear it clearly, is that the subcommittee would like to take the first pass at making recommendations after we have our hearing, uh, in two weeks, uh, what to do with that land.
Yeah, and we, we were very careful to try to not talk too much about that because it was a planning commission discussion.
Sure.
Um, but once we, once council started talking about this overlay district,
Yep.
um, we realized how much it touches that current arc, um, zoning area. And we kind of, at that point, stopped and said, let's just wait and see what happens with the public comment here, what people have to say in that area, bring this up to the whole planning commission and see if we have support to move forward with that idea.
The two are really tied together.
They, they are, and, and looking at an overlay district from council, it sounds like it might be the easiest, the best way to kind of look at it, but it definitely, if so, the, the underlying zoning needs to be addressed at the same time, it seems.
Thinking about your first question, Chris, you're asking, will the entire planning commission recommend changes or will the subcommittee?
So I think what I would, what I heard Scott say, and I'm not hearing Wendy say it, is that they would like to take the first pass at making recommendations.
Recommendations.
And, yeah, and I, I, I think that, that makes good sense. My, my only word of caution is also please take into account, you'll be on the committee now, uh, for the strategic planning, you know, what, what our residents came back to, uh, and it's interesting because it, we didn't see as much of this the last time we did this was, they want green open spaces, so please just consider that as you sift through.
And I think that that's one of our, our big goals is, you know, the airport is in Cascade Township, there's nothing we can do to change that. There's a lot of people that use the airport, not just within Cascade Township, but regionally. Um, and trying to be good neighbors to the airport, but also keeping in mind what the citizens of Cascade want. And making sure that that is part of the plan for the future.
Just a quick raise of hands, who's on this committee? Do you two gentlemen have any concerns with this approach?
I don't. I don't either. So.
And I do think it's good that the public comment is going to be in front of the whole planning commission, you know, that we're going to meet the Thursday before that meeting to come up with some direction for things that I guess we want to really maybe specific, we don't know yet, but maybe specific questions we want to hear from the residents in that area, just to have a direction for that meeting. So people aren't just, you know, no offense, standing up and complaining for two hours about something the airport maybe, you know, um, we don't want that. We want it to be a productive meeting. So we're going to meet the week before to try to come up with a plan for that meeting, but we will all be here um, to hear what the public has to say. And we all do have access to the strategic plan as well.
Would, would you be willing to share those questions, uh, in advance to the planning commission?
Yeah. I mean, and I, and I don't know. Yeah. I'm assuming we'll come up with questions.
I guess we hadn't talked about coming up with specific questions.
Or if you have an outline, you know.
General direction.
Yeah.
We did come up with, my thought would be that we would present some, some topics to you or some questions to you. And at the meeting, because we would have public here, you would then say to them, you know, this is the plan for the meeting. These are some of the things that we want to hear from you. We want your ideas on these things. Since you're leading this meeting, that's was my, my thought on what our next subcommittee meeting would do, and we would give them to you beforehand so that you could be prepared for that.
Absolutely. Member actually.
Well, I just think it's important to get the audience to focus on specific areas, not just wander all over for twenty six minutes or whatever on a certain issue.
Right.
Okay.
Cause there's things we can't control.
No, and I, I, I expect a long meeting. So it would prepare everybody.
So, so then when I suggest that maybe we put it, put proposed topics or some of the topics that we're going to be discussing and get them put up here on the projector so that that would help. When you're sitting in the audience, you can, they can be looking at the topics and be formulated.
If you send it to me, I can, this, this screen will pop up there. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, not limited to, but these are the topics, the main topics, but please, if you have.
I, I expect, like I said, well, it could turn out. So yeah, that's great.
Brian, how many people, it's weird because I, I, in my mind, there's more people there, but you said there's not many residents or owners about.
There is, I was looking through that. I think there is, if I remember off the top of my head here, eight different property owners. There's more parcels than that, eight different property owners, maybe seven homes in that area.
Cause he's, you're notifying everybody north of M six.
Pretty much between M six and the airport.
Okay. Yeah.
Yep.
So that's the thing too, is hearing that is there's not a ton.
Well, I think that's what makes it so great is, um, a couple of reasons. One, if the room's full of forty people, then we know that we've got maybe some people that are outside of that target region. But number two, with a fewer number of people, we can really engage in some conversation and find out what they're thinking and what they want and where they're all coming from, what their perspectives are. You know, in the committee, one of the things we're, we're debating and talking about is, is things like, for instance, the current zoning allows for the, allows pretty good flexibility for the airport to put up a gas station, a hotel, uh, you know, whatever it decides it needs. And, and it, and it's, and I don't want to say it's rubber stamped by the township, but it's pretty close. Uh, you know, and, and they can be right next to each other, no setbacks or anything.
Right.
And, uh, and so those are kinds of some of the things that we're looking at and thinking, well, as that area to the, to the southeast is, is developed, how do we want to see it developed? Do we want to be more engaged on that non aeronautical development? And, uh, and, and so that's, I, I guess that's kind of the, that more of the direction of, of what we, and that's what kind of tied this all, all together.
And I think we all know, I mean, most, I think everybody's, we talked about, I think at the last meeting, the survey that came out about the, um, airport access survey. Just knowing that there is potential that they're looking at putting in access to the airport from that section was one of the choices, the options out there. And when we're talking gas stations, hotels, if you put an airport access off the highway in that area, that's prime, prime real estate for those things. And do people in that area want those things? And does the township in general want those things? And from what we're hearing so far is no, but it'll be interesting to hear what people have to say.
Absolutely. Member Maxi's been waiting.
Go ahead. Brian, I think you mentioned that, uh, the airport already owned some of these properties uh, between M six and Thornapple River Drive. Is that correct?
Not really the ones we're looking at tonight. They own more north of forty eighth street than everything. And if you're looking at the zoning map, everything in AC one and two, but those ARC parcels are mostly non airport.
Okay. So it's just the stuff north of forty eighth.
Yep.
Okay. Well, the other thing I just want to mention is, uh, Leslie Abdo from Foster Swift has done a great job in, um, looking at chapter fourteen and redlining her ideas on what could be done uh, in there. And she's really very open with us. And luckily Brian is enlarged, so I can even read it now. So I'm very helpful.
That was helpful.
She did, I think, really well on the wormies for us. We're fortunate to have her.
Yeah, that's why I asked her to be on this. Yeah, we, we worked very well with her.
Yeah.
Yeah. When is the seventeenth?
Okay.
Awesome.
And Brian, is that currently the only thing?
Then adding this hotel discussion item would be the only other one then.
You might want to push that hotel one if it's going to be a late, if it's, I mean, should you push the hotel one?
We could always just have that second on the agenda too and see.
We could table it if it ends up being.
The only reason I, I say perhaps keep it is it's timely with what the township's trying to do.
Yeah.
And the, the supervisor has been pretty emphatic about getting the PUD stuff.
Yeah. And if we're, I mean, if it's midnight, then it can be tabled.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yes. And by the way, I, I I think we can somewhat communicate on that because we're not deliberating anything. If there's questions on the PUD, stuff like that. So feel free to send that to Brian. You don't have to wait for the meeting. Uh, if you see something there.
Well, yeah, you guys can always, remember, you can always reach out and ask me for clarification, questions and things like that, even on, you know, site plan reviews and special use permits. So always feel free to reach out to me. And if it's a question that would help the whole group, we can always repeat that at the meeting as well and go over again.
I'm actually.
I just want to mention, I'm going to be gone the next two Thursdays. Ben, are you available to take notes?
I am.
Okay. But I'll be back in two weeks from today.
So you'll be here for the seventeenth. Excellent.
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Excellent. All right.
Hopefully I'll be here.
I hope you're here. All right. Uh, any other business? Okay. Moving on to article twelve. Do we have any visitors that are wishing to speak? Are you here for a class? You should have come two weeks ago. It only took thirty minutes, but here you are. Welcome. Glad. What school are you with? Okay. Very cool. Well, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Great. Hey, we like having an audience. Yeah. Bring, bring your friends.
Two weeks should be very interesting.
Yes. Come if you want to come to.
Yeah. Excellent. All right. Um, hearing no, uh, visitors, anybody, Matty on? Zoom. All right.
We're not popular.
All right. I hear a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move from, um, member rapport, support from member Rissy, all those papers say hi.
All right.
Good evening.
All right. You can have this back. Have more than one.